Holland City Council, I'm Mayor Nathan Box. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Byrd, Vreeman.
Here.
Peters. Corbin. Coronado.
Here.
Arnshorst, here. Hookstra.
Here.
Raymond.
Here.
Mayor Box.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Wonderful, thank you. We're going to begin this evening's meeting as we have for many years. First with an opening prayer this evening by Councilmember Vreeman, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we would invite you to join us if you're so inclined.
Would you pray with me, please? Lord, will you come before you at the, really, the close of this day? And we thank you for it. We thank you for getting us up this morning, for all the different work and responsibilities that we've been able to manage throughout this day. And we'd ask now that you would cause our attention to be clear, our thoughts to be concise, as we would engage in the work of our city. We thank you for this city and what it means to its residents and its surrounding communities. And we ask that you continue to knit this community together in all of its different entities, that it will continue to look out for the other and promote generosity in everything we do. And so we would put now this time before you that in it, we might be wise in discerning for the sake of our citizens, our state, and our nation. And it's by your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item on our agenda is our consent agenda, and these consent agenda items are considered to be fairly routine. They've been reviewed by council members as part of our packet, and they will be enacted in one motion unless a member of the audience or a member of City Council asks to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed in its regular order on the consent agenda. But before I ask that, Kathy, would you please review the consent agenda for us, items for us?
4A, absence excused. 4B, approval of minutes. May 4, 2022, regular meeting. 4D, written petitions and communications. Speculative IFT Lakeshore Industrial Properties LLC, 1285 Waverly Road. 4E, Holland Board of Public Works, resolution allowing the Holland Board of Public Works to adopt regulatory accounting for certain transactions. 4F, Holland Board of Public Works, East Point Substation, 38 KV breaker, 38 KV circuit switcher, and 15 KV breaker purchase. 4G, City Clerk, claims filed against the city. 4H, City Clerk, annual license renewal, 2022, 2023. 4I, Community Neighborhood Services, emergency vehicle access easement for 546 West 40th Street. 4J, Finance, sub-public hearing for PA 198 tax abatement for Hudsonville Creamery and Ice Cream LLC, 345 East 48th Street, June 1, 2022. 4K, Finance, March financial reports.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there any member of the public that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none, any member of council that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none there. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the consent agenda?
Will we approve as presented?
Moved by Hookstra, is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado. Any discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Vreeman.
Yes.
Peters. Corbin. Coronado.
Yes.
Arnshorst.
Yes.
Hookstra.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next is public comment. During all of our regular meetings and our study sessions as well, our public meetings in the City of Holland, we provide the opportunity for public comment under the Open Meetings Act of the State of Michigan. It's the opportunity for the public to be able to speak to council on any subject matter that you would like to speak on where there's not a public hearing taking place later in the meeting. It is one-way communication. It's an opportunity for you to speak to us. We don't answer questions at this time or engage in discussion at this time, but it gives you the opportunity to let us know what you think is important. Always, please, address the council. And also, please note that there are three lights on the dais in front of me. There's a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. The green light means that you're doing well on time. The yellow light means that you are, have one minute left, and the red light means that your five minutes has expired. And we are very strict about that, so we ask that you please abide by that as well. Please approach the podium and tell us then your name and the municipality in which you live. Is there anyone here who would like to address council at this time? If so, please come forward. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Anne from Zealand, Anne Henriksen. Good evening, council. I want to compliment you on tulip time. It was spectacular. And thank you. You must be very proud of our community and the way everyone came out and operated and enjoyed. Also, National Day of Prayer. I thank you, Mayor, for that declaration. The Mayor of Zealand also made the same declaration. There was about 30 to 40 people that showed up in Centennial Park for Holland, and it was very successful. And I happened to be the one to be in charge of Zealand. And again, there was a good crowd in the prayers and the honoring of our country through the prayers. I also appreciate the article in the newspaper about the ordinance. And so I would like to address that this evening from the religious point of view. Represent the religious point of view of the communities in not only Holland but Zealand and surrounding areas. With all due respect, Mr. Van Der Veen, you have a very good reputation, highly recommended by many in the community. But as Mike Trethuie would say, in all due respect, we don't agree with all that you said. You did say very important things, but it wasn't in total. So I have prepared for the council tonight each a packet of some other things that I would like you to look into that are legal throughout the state. We are not protected by this ordinance. It is a matter of opinion and then legal opinion as well. There are, this is in conflict. The ordinance is in conflict with the Elliott Larson. Even though we are protected there, the ordinance also specifies a people group that is not specified in the Elliott Larson. And the Elliott Larson law is made democratically by Congress, not by the judicial. And right now, the Attorney General of Michigan is trying to get the Supreme Court of Michigan to change that and include sexual orientation, gender identity, and inclusion. So, expression. So I'm appealing to you to take a good, hard look at other issues in the state that are beyond just what was presented, to see that we are in Holland, you are in Holland, can easily be sued. And this is what has happened when a discrimination against a legal group has been made because of their rights in the Constitution. And then it turns right around that that person sues the city. So I want you to take it all into consideration. I also want to make it clear, most of the presentations that have been made here have been made from a Christian point of view. But we are not, that's what Holland is. The majority is Christian. But on the other hand, we're representing the religious point of view. And this would be Muslim, this would be Buddhist, this would be all. They are all to be recognized in this community, and they are here. So we express the transformation that happens in our Christianity. But on the other hand, there are other groups that we represent. So take it all into consideration. I have a packet for each one of you and a letter. And if you have any questions, you can contact me. I've already been contacted by the council. And as far as I'm concerned, we still aren't through yet. There's more information to be had and more discussion to be had. Questions like, who are you and what do you want? And why do you want it? So please, due diligence is what I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Yes, my name is Deborah Cryvano, and I reside in the City of Holland. Thank you for letting me speak today concerning the anti-discrimination ordinance and amendment exemptions. At the last council, City Council meeting two weeks ago, we heard from attorney Mr. Van Der Veen regarding whether the religious institutions were covered against lawsuits. I want to thank Mr. Van Der Veen for explaining correctly that both our freedom of speech and the right to exercise our beliefs is indeed covered by the First Amendment. What was not mentioned, and what was not addressed, however, is whether religious institutions and charities' actions were covered. A quick scroll on Google through court cases involving the First Amendment proved that these cases are brought to court to find judgment on whether the defendant's actions can be justified. For instance, I can ask you for your age, your height, your sex, et cetera, and I have the freedom to ask you that question. You also have the freedom to respond. Both of us are protected by the First Amendment. But if I use that information to give you clothes or assign you to a certain classroom, the action can now be called discriminatory. And if you don't like the results of my actions, you can sue me. Obviously, some exemptions are needed. In regards to the anti-discrimination ordinance, there must be a reason that this City Council found it necessary to include eight different groups under the exemptions. Already in Section 254, it currently states exemptions. This chapter shall not apply to the following. Now, I'll list these in brief instead of in detail, but basically, they're number one, to a private club; two, to religious educational institution; three, to the rental of housing in a certain case; four, to rental housing in another case; five, in cases for the purpose of providing housing for seniors; six, a government entity or agency; seven, any conduct lawfully protected by the City, Holland City Charter, Michigan Constitution, U.S. Constitution; eight, any conduct that's exempt under Michigan Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act, Michigan Disabilities Acts, federal anti-discrimination laws. So those are eight different groups that you have bothered to list under exemptions. So apparently, even though these groups are also fully protected under the First Amendment, it is necessary to list them as an exemption. Hmm. Why is this? I'll tell you why. It is to protect them from that action of renting a house to a certain individual. It's to protect actions taken by organizations in order to do their task or job. Therefore, what we are all here for is to get religious institutions, all religious institutions and charities, listed under the same exemption in order to protect their actions, even the actions of giving. We know the First Amendment protects our verbal speech, but it often ends up in court if we perform an action based on that speech. To make this clear, the religious educational institution that you've listed must be protected because otherwise, they could not place students in a particular grade based on age, since the anti-discrimination document prevents age discrimination. As religious institution and charities, we must have the same rights. We also educate. We have Sunday School, Hebrew School, all these schools. We also need to separate according to age. Charities have to discriminate in their giving. Based on what? The person's age, their height, their sex? If you're going to give them out clothes to the needy, you have to know these things. I'm requesting the City Council to add an exemption for religious institutions and charities. Why would you want to refuse this action? Finally, we have elected you as our City Councilmembers, each one of you, to be our voice. And we respectfully acknowledge that you're making a sacrifice to do so, but we have elected you. With all due respect, we've not elected Mr. Van Der Veen or any other attorney to represent us. We want your decision. We, as community members, want you to listen with your heart and make your own decision to protect all religious groups and charities as they are the groups in the community that try their best to help and offer compassion to the homeless and the needy. Isn't that what we all want to do? Why would you leave them off the list?
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Keith and Matt, Ron, good to see all of you again. My name is Anne Saliers, and I live at 561 Hiawatha Drive here in the city. I retired six months ago from Holland Board of Public Works, and life is good. I've recently, I've recently been appointed to a committee by the Ottawa County Commissioners. It's a regional committee called the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Committee, or SEDS for short. It's run by and reports to the West Michigan Regional Planning Commission in accordance with the rules established by the U.S. Economic Development Administration for the purpose of maintaining a comprehensive economic development strategy. David B. is the executive director of the West Michigan Regional Planning Commission. And SEDS is a voluntary committee made up of economic and community developers from across Region 8, which includes communities in the seven counties of Alleghen, Ionia, Kent, McCosta, Macom, Osceola, and Ottawa. Each county has two representatives, a public sector representative that is typically a current economic development professional. Amanda Murray from Lakeshore Advantage currently holds that seat. And I was selected as the private sector representative. The committee meets four times a year and assists in developing the annual SEDS document. It includes identifying potential public works projects, planning projects, and other projects that have potential for promoting economic and community development. It makes no policy decisions for the West Michigan Regional Planning Commission. Rather, it provides input and feedback. And that's where your opportunity lies. I want you to be aware of the committee and its purpose and that I am a conduit for voicing the City of Holland's goals and interests. I also recommend the SEDS document, like Holland's master plan, be a reference document in Holland's Strategic Planning Advance Process held each year. Ahead of that, if you would like to know more about the committee and the kinds of goals that are in this report, it could be a study session item. I'd be happy to walk through it with you. The next SEDS meeting is next week on May 25. Addit will recommend this year's SEDS report be adopted by the West Michigan Regional Planning Commission and submitted to the U.S. Economic Development Administration. I will forward a copy of the report to Keith and for distribution to all of you. And I encourage you to read it and provide any feedback to me. And I can be reached at anne.saliers@gmail.com. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on our agenda, we have, going down my list here, written petitions and communications. We generally allow public comment in public during our meetings for individuals that want to come to the meetings, but we also have, for those folks who may not be interested or able to come into a council meeting directly, the opportunity to send us emails. And that email address is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. I'll repeat that for those who are watching at home. We collect those in the time period between our regular meetings, and then we accept those in. We don't read them out loud here at our meetings, but we accept them as part of the record. And as my understanding, we did not have any over the course of the last two weeks. So no need for any action on that tonight, but just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that. Next item, item number 11, reports from special committees. The Holland Youth Advisory Council update and farewell to the class of 2022. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. And this is always a highlight of the year where we're able to welcome in our HyAC students, who are not only city students, but students from around the near region. And Esther Fafowski, in her role, but more importantly, Joan McCluskey really does a fantastic job of managing this program. And it's less managing, it's more something that I know Joan is, loves, and is excited about. So Joan, take it away, and please introduce our fantastic students.
Okay, Hannah, you want to go ahead and? Yep. Hannah Huggett will be the emcee for this presentation.
Hello, my name is Hannah Huggett, and I am the chair of our core council on HyAC. Welcome to the 2022 Senior Farewell for the Holland Youth Advisory Council, HyAC. We're here to celebrate the accomplishments of HyAC this year, but before I begin summarizing a few of our collective accomplishments, I'd like to take a moment to thank City Council on behalf of all of the students. We are so grateful for the opportunity to serve on either youth committees or as youth representatives on adult boards. Participating actively in municipal government processes and supporting the growth of our city in many diverse areas is a truly valuable experience. So on behalf of all of the HyAC youth, thank you for this opportunity. Now, to summarize a few of our accomplishments. First, at the beginning of 2022, Core Counsel presented the 2021 Youth Social Justice Award. Core Counsel selected 17-year-old Mariah Stewart as the recipient because she has exemplified what it means to be an advocate for social change and demonstrated the powerful voice youth can have in our community. This year, HyAC students also volunteered for the Great Thanksgiving Banquet and met for our first strategic planning meeting, the goal of which was to establish a five-year plan for HyAC's growth. Now, students serving on student boards will share a bit about their experiences and accomplishments.
Hello, my name is Sarah Brown, and I served on the Social Services Committee. This year, the committee bought indoor and outdoor recess toys for Jefferson Elementary School. We also labeled and organized food for Community Action House on a Saturday.
Hello, my name is Eva Whiteman, and I served on the Environmental Committee. Our team started the year with a beach cleanup at Holland State Park. We also passed out flyers on February 25 to encourage patrons and restaurants on 8th Street to skip the strata on National Skip the Strata. And later, we again sponsored our recycled art contest with an art made from recycled materials. And this year, we introduced an 18-plus category. We ended the year by joining forces with Hope College Office of Sustainability to sponsor a beach cleanup at Holland State Park, and we collected over 290 pounds of debris.
Hello, my name is Braden Griffin, and I serve on the Recreation Committee. We began the year by decorating supper sacks for kids' food basket and brought gingerbread cookies to Boys and Girls Club to decorate as a Christmas surprise. And then our committee also braved the weather to sponsor a scavenger hunt after the St. Patrick's Day Parade. Participants followed clues to various downtown vendors to get trinkets or candy. And the first teams to solve the clues won the gift cards. And then what a better way to wrap the year than with the Easter Bunny, which I ended up actually being this year, as the year before, because I was forced to by Joan. No, I'm just kidding, I definitely was not forced to. But that was, it was pretty fun, especially when kids are like, why? Like, you know, trying to hide from people, and they're, you know, I'm putting on an Easter Bunny suit, and they're like, is that what the Easter Bunny is? I'm like, oh, no. Anyways, the committee also braved the winter during that event because it was really cold at Collin Park. And I also wanted to say, thank you, Joan. We really appreciate it. So coming from a student, I know he already mentioned it, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
HyAC students served not only on youth boards, but some of them served as youth representatives on city boards. So I'll invite those youth to come up and speak about their experiences.
Hi, I'm Angel Venegas. I serve on the Human Relations Commission. The Human Relation Commission continues their work on tenant landlord training initiatives and hosted an Affordable Housing and Community Prosperity Zoom and Learn with local nonprofits and business partners.
Hello, my name is Leif Baumann, and one thing that Parks and Recreation Committee has done this year through review and drafting has been helping with the creation of the ice skating facility plans, which I'm sure many of you are familiar with by now. And I again wanted to thank the city for all the work that they have done to make this project a, become a reality.
Hello, my name is Charity Ehrman. One thing that the teen court has done this year is work to expand and bring back the teen court program by communicating with administrators at local schools and creating plans to train jurors for future years.
Student Nicole Genzik was not able to be here tonight, but she served on the Downtown Development Authority. One highlight of their work was that they voted on creating new regulations regarding when the social district will be open, as well as figuring out the plans for the district during tulip time.
Hello, my name is Greta Traver, and I served on the Police and Community Relations Committee. And one thing this year we've done is learn about the Mental Health Task Force section of the Police Department that has recently been created. Through this program, the Holland PD has been able to assist over 100 people with mental health crises in a much more effective and natural method.
Hello, my name is Jay Wuhan. One thing that the International Relations Commission did this year is to plan for the city's international festival this October. This included discussing possibilities for different activities, entertainers, and food vendors. We also took in feedback from previous participants and discussed how we could improve the experience.
Now, I'll announce the seniors in the Holland Youth Advisory Council. Seniors, please stand when I call your name. Aiden Vandevos, Braden Griffin, Duncan Hagmeyer, Greta Van Zetten, Lauren Adamski, Sarah Brown, Sarah Schlaugh, Sophia Yost, and Amelia Acardo. Now, let's take a moment to say a big congratulations to the seniors and thank you for your service. Seniors, there will be a reception in the atrium. So to seniors and parents, please feel free to join us for that, and thank you, council, for your time.
Hannah, thank you, and thank you to all of the seniors and all of the members of HyAC. We have the pleasure of having you come and join us at some of our study sessions. You guys have done a great job speaking at the public comment period, and it's wonderful to see all of the great things that you're doing in the community. Your voices are important. We like hearing them. We like hearing your viewpoint and taking that in and making that part of our deliberations. Thank you for taking the time, stepping up, and serving your community in this way. We really appreciate it. Thank you, guys. And I know we'd love to join them in the reception, but we still have work to do. Next item on the agenda is item 12E 4.1 Finance. Purchasing mobile command vehicle for public safety services. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. I'm asked, I'm also going, just momentarily, I'm going to ask Lynn McCammon, Lynn, just because they're having a reception out there. If you can kind, if you can close the door behind them, not that we're closing people out, but so they can have fun at their party. Thank you. Captain Keith Mulder is here with us tonight. And I know that this was an item that was discussed at the council advance and through the budget process and has information, and we're excited to move forward, theoretically, I guess, depending on your approval, with this purchase of the mobile command unit. We thought it'd be appropriate that Captain Mulder provide us with some information about that tonight. So Keith, welcome.
Thank you. Feel like I lost half the crowd, though.
I thought yours was going to be the most exciting item on the agenda.
That's what I thought, too.
Apparently not.
This custom mobile command vehicle has been in the works for several years. This custom mobile command vehicle has been in the works for several years. We started research in April of 2020. We did some initial planning and drawing up the plans, and then a couple of weeks ago, we went actually to the site where the vehicles are made. We did some more research on what they can do and saw some of the layouts and made some final decisions on the layout and the equipment that we will have in it. And we believe we came up with a very good plan that we just recently got the final numbers for. So, it's our request for approval for three-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars from LDV Custom Specialty Vehicles of Burlington, Wisconsin. The approved fiscal year '23 budget includes three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars for this purchase, for this purpose. And LDV has offered the best value pricing for the vehicle through Houston-Gaveston Area Council. As a cooperative purchasing organization, the HGAC solicits sealed bids and contract pricing for police mobile command vehicles and many other vehicles and other resources that government organizations utilize to serve their communities. And this satisfies the city's competitive bidding requirements. You can see some photos on the screen of what a similar vehicle looks like, the outside of it, and on the inside of it, that's a similar layout to what we will have. It's not quite the same, but that's some of the vehicles that we looked at on our visit. So we customized it from kind of some of those layouts.
Any questions from Council members?
No, no questions, but I remember when Councilwoman Raymond and the mayor were first elected, and one of our tours was of the police station, and we got to view the current mobile command unit. And when we heard that it sometimes got towed to places for use, we, you know, we, I remember that. So I think this is, every once in a while, you need to update equipment.
Yes.
So I think this is a worthy replacement.
Belinda?
I had one question. So I just wondered, do you guys keep stats on how often your mobile command unit was used within every year?
I don't have stats on it, but we do use it every year. We not only use it for training when we do some joint trainings, and we do some kind of larger-scale incident training, but we use it for critical incidents that we've been out on when we need some command decision-making. And we also use it for our negotiators when we call the negotiating team out. There's a section of the vehicle that's used for them. And we've been able to use it for large-scale scenes where we're doing a search and rescue area for either elderly or lost children, different things like that also. So it varies a lot how much it gets used.
Thank you, Keith. And I apologize earlier. I called you Paul. Was my days working in the prosecutor's office? Sorry.
That's all right.
All right. Any other questions from Council members?
One more question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is this, this looks a little bit longer than the current one, is it?
Yes. It is a thirty-two foot. I believe the current one is a twenty-four foot.
Okay, yeah, it does look considerably, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, go ahead, Belinda.
So was that one of the changes, I mean, approach to getting the new one, is it's going to be, well, that's almost ten feet or?
Yeah.
Longer?
Yeah, the current one has been quite small for many years. And it's a, it's a retrofitted vehicle that was never intended for mobile command, but we've made it work. So this is going to be a much better suited space for what we do it for.
So how many typical officers would you have in your command unit? Like, I just wondered.
On some incidents, we'd have two or three command officers in the center area, which is kind of the conference area, and then the back end with a crisis negotiator's team. They typically have four to five people in there. So you could have easily six to eight people working in the two different areas at the same time.
So to help me and maybe our constituents listening, so this would be called out, say, for instance, hostage or something that happens, and the officers would still show up, the patrol officers, and then this would be the contact person from?
Correct. So the backend would be for the negotiators who'd be trying to make contact, and the center area would be for command decision-making.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from Council members? Mr. Corbin, I believe you had something you wanted to?
Yeah, just a motion to support 12E 4.1, the purchase of a mobile command vehicle for Public Safety Services Police Division.
Moved by Corbin. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado. Any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Peters?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Aaron Sors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, 12E 4.2 Finance, Grant Application Submittal, and I believe an introduction. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. While there is a recommended motion before you tonight that staff will outline, we all, we also wanted to take this opportunity to have Finance Director Lynn McCammon introduce you to a new member of our team that you authorized. And since we're talking about grants, not only talk about this grant, but also talk about really a process that we're firming up, if you would, because we expect to be applying for more grants. So Lynn, why don't you take it away from here?
Good evening, Mayor Box and members of City Council. Yes, I'm pleased to introduce you in a moment to our new grant manager. You may recall that recently, we had the discussion about the need for the city and the Board of Public Works together to have a position to navigate all the many grants that are coming a lot more frequently now because of what we've seen coming out of the federal government with some of the COVID relief, and also a lot of them through the state, too. So we had gone together and set a search out to find one, not knowing if we'd be fortunate, because I think a lot of municipalities are starting to do just the same thing. But we are very fortunate as we've, as we've seen at the city, to have a good response. And so tonight, I'd like to introduce you to Connie Locker. And in a moment, she's going to tell you a little bit about herself and then tell you a little about, about the item before you. But one more additional item is just a reminder, the process here at the city, we've always come before you and asked for approval to accept grants in certain cases. And that's, it's going to vary by the type of grant. So most of them, you have to accept the grant, and then we apply for the grant. And then sometimes, like the street sweeper, you approved accepting that grant, and then you saw, again, the purchase come through, so you saw it again because we actually purchased the street sweeper. So this particular one requires before those two processes to actually get the governing body's approval to even apply. So there's several steps, and they're all somewhat different depending on the grant. But so Connie's going to give you a little introduction about herself, and we're really excited to have her here. As you can imagine, everybody was just waiting to talk with her because she has got a long list. In fact, we were at the board just yesterday, and I think she was rapidly writing down five pages of notes. So we're excited for her to be here. And with that, I'll turn it over for her to give an introduction.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you so much. Just gonna get my stuff out really quick. I'm Connie Locker, as Lynn introduced. And a little bit about myself, I actually come from the nonprofit museum world. I do have a master's degree in historic preservation, and I worked for several years in the Planning Department for the City of Ypsilanti, so I have some municipal experience as well. But most recently, I was at the Tri-Cities Historical Museum in Grand Haven. And there, I led the Development Department as the Development and Membership Manager. I really spearheaded any fundraising effort that the museum needed. So from local millage renewals to donor retention and recruitment, to grant writing and administration, to even federal-level advocacy efforts for museum funding allocations. I did a lot of that, those kind of things. I'm not really, I'm not originally from Holland, but I'm very familiar with the community. I worked for the Holland Museum for several years, and I'm really excited to be back here. I love this community, so I'm excited to bring my skills to the city and to be able to work with you all. So, yeah.
Welcome.
Welcome. It's great to have you here.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
And I'm sure you're very, very popular right now with staff.
I feel like I've definitely hit the ground running. I've had quite a few meetings. So it's been, it's been great, though. Everybody's been very welcoming and very helpful. So very patient. In front of you tonight is the new leader's request. So a little background on the, the request and the grant program. I believe this is a new grant program for the city. This is through the Michigan, Michigan, sorry, they just changed their name, Michigan Arts and Culture Council, or MAC, because we need another MAC acronym. But this, they have several different grant programs, mostly for nonprofits, but also some for municipalities as well. This is one of their smaller grant programs, and it's specifically aimed at student-led councils. So I immediately thought of HyAC as an option for this grant. It gives them an opportunity, student-led councils, to create arts or culture programs, to bring in speakers, to sponsor events, things like that. So I met with Esther Fafowski and talked about some of the upcoming plans that HyAC had for this coming year. And the, the project, as reflected in your packet, is to do a cultural event, to bring in Potawatomi representatives to talk about their culture and history, use of natural resources, and how that bridges with our modern sustainability efforts. So we thought we would have an opportunity to really highlight the city's sustainability programs as well with that. So it's a $2,000 grant request for a total $4,000 project.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions from Council members?
I do have one.
Yes, go ahead, Scott.
First, welcome.
Thank you.
So it mentions an in-kind match opportunity. Can we document the HyAC students' time and apply a value to that for an in-kind match?
I would have to ask the grant maker. I imagine we could, yeah.
Okay, if we can track those, that would be wonderful for an in-kind match.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Belinda, yes?
So I don't know much about grant writing, but welcome, first of all.
Thank you.
So how do you find all these grants? Is that, you're finding them for every department that helps us, you know?
Yeah. So my process basically has been to meet with the different department heads and staff and mostly listen and hear what projects are coming up, take a look at the budget, things that are, things that are planned for six years out, and try and match those with grant opportunities that are available. So in finding grants, a lot of them are at the federal level through the different federal departments. But then there's also some state-level grants that use federal money. There's some state-level grants that just use state money. And it's really just a lot of research and a lot of looking around and seeing where projects that are coming up for the city might fit. We don't want to ever create a project that, for a grant program that's available, we want to just match projects that are already planned with, with funding opportunities.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Nikki?
So where is your office, then? Where did they?
I'm in the Finance Department.
The Finance Department, okay, good. Thank you. That makes sense. In case we need to find you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And what is the pleasure of Council in regard to the grant application submittal?
Move to approve the submittal.
Moved by Vreeman. Is there support? Support by Aaron Sors. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Aaron Sors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item, 12E 6.1 Gifts. Kathy, would you please review the gifts for us?
The City Manager's Office is pleased to report the following gifts. Parks and Recreation Summer Concert Series donation, Hayworth, Inc., $3,000. Parks and Recreation Sal Press Scholarship Program Cash Receipts, reporting dates April 4th through May 1, 2022, $136. It is recommended that these donations be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account, and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to said donors.
Great, thank you, Kathy. What is the pleasure of Council in regard to the gifts?
I move that we accept the gifts with a token of our appreciation.
Moved by Coronado. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Aaron Sors. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, 12E 6.2 Management and Administrative Services, Sale of Surplus Property, 578 Grafskap Road. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, hello. Mr. Vindeikin, will you please take this item for us?
I would be happy to, if you would please advance to the next slide. Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So this piece of property is highlighted here in yellow. You actually declared this property as surplus back in August. As a part of our process, we send letters to the adjacent property owners. If you remember correctly, we were actually approached by the property owner to the north. We send a letter to the property owner to the south, hey, this is happening, or would you be interested? And we were contacted by the Tuningas. Ms. Glover is on the north, the Tuningas are on the south. And they said, yes, we actually would be interested in purchasing a, a small portion of that, what is about a thirty-three foot right-of-way, which happens to be the old inner-urban right-of-way, if you remember correctly. Some of us history buffs, the inner-urban ran from Chicago into Holland and brought tourists back and forth. Those neighbors, then, we put them in contact with each other. They had some very amicable discussions. And ultimately, the Tuningas said they would like to have about thirteen feet by about two-hundred feet. If you could advance to the next slide, please. There you go. You can see the, the property in, on the right side of this survey. If you go one more, it's a, we'll dive in a little deeper. So you can see that, that, that piece there that's to the south, the Tuningas would purchase, and then Ms. Glover would be purchasing the larger, much larger piece to the north. Our assessor looked at the property, felt that it was worth about $8,000. Ms. Glover originally had offered that amount for it, and collectively, they came back with the same amount broken up into 1924 for the Tuningas and 6076 for Ms. Glover. And our recommendation to you would be to approve the sale of property to those two adjacent landowners.
Great, thank you, Matt. Any questions from Council members? What is the pleasure of Council in regard to the sale of the surplus property at 578 Grafskap Road?
Move to approve the sale of the surplus property presented.
Moved by Vreeman. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Hookstra. Any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Coronado?
Yes.
Aaron Sors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda, item number thirteen, Communications from the City Manager. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you. Just handful of things. One, just, you'll see a couple items on the agenda tonight that I think we really just highlighted, probably routine and nature, but every once in a while, it's just like, it's nice to get an update, not only on the topic that you're considering and approving, but also kind of an overall system. And not only the grants, but in this case, the sale of surplus property. We're systematically working through the disposal of those properties. So thank you to Matt and staff for doing that. Just handful of brief things tonight. One, just an immense amount of thank yous to the community, to the Tulip Time Organization, really to our entire city team, some in smaller ways, some in pretty gigantic time-consuming, hot and uncomfortable ways for supporting certainly our community, but hundreds of thousands of people that came and enjoyed the community for Tulip Time. We have on the agenda next week, an update on Windmill Island Gardens, and we're kind of planning on doing a little bit of a recap on all things Tulip Time also in that. So look forward to that next week. Couple items coming up event-wise. Memorial Day, I think you're going to be receiving directly from Marty some more specific instructions soon. But Memorial Day, we are looking forward again to having kind of the full slate of events, the parade starting at 9:30, and the ceremony at Pilgrim Home Cemetery at 11 o'clock. And historically, certainly, Mayor and Council have participated in the parade, and the mayor in the, in the ceremony. So you'll get more specific instructions from our office leading up to that. And then Mayor's Exchange, we are getting to the point, look for specific request information from SINCA from my office. We are doing a community exchange with Luddington this year. The date that you will be going there is Friday, July 22. And we're looking at, because it starts early, probably you getting up there on your leisure on the night before, and make, we make arrangements for hotel. And then we pack that day full on the, on the 22nd, and then stay again, and then you can be free on Saturday morning earlier if you want, but to kind of go, go your own way at that point. So look for information from SINCA on that, and then also reserve that Luddington will be coming our way on Friday, August 12. And that's all I have this evening.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Van Beek. And I want to piggyback on a couple of things that you said. One is in regard to that community exchange with Luddington. Great opportunity for, for us to be able to share some time together outside of this room. us to be able to share some time together outside of this room. We've spent the majority of the last two and a half years looking at each other through screens or just during meetings, and it would be kind of nice to be able to get away, so I would encourage council members to take advantage of that. Also, in regard to Tulip Time, also a big thank you to everyone out there, lots and lots of work went into, into that from a lot of different people, many of them behind the scenes, many employees from the city, working tirelessly early in the morning till late in the evening, our Department of Public Safety officers standing in dark uniforms, in safety gear, in the sunshine, in 90-plus degree heat, with smiles on their faces, engaging wonderfully with the community, but hoping for any little wisp of a breeze or a bit of shade that they might be able to get. Everyone did a great, great job. I spent an awful lot of time out on the street over the course of the week, and everyone I talked to was having an absolutely wonderful time, enjoying, enjoying the festival, enjoying the city, enjoying everything that we have to offer. That does not just happen by accident, that takes a lot of work and a lot of planning from a lot of people, and I think it was executed absolutely perfectly this year. It was great to be back in full force, and so thank you for everyone that played a role in that, that really makes a big difference, and I think we're going to see a lot of people coming back to Holland, Michigan, enjoying us, again, not only at Tulip Time, but year round. And then one other experience I had today, one of the great joys of, of being the mayor, I got to participate in two immigration and naturalization ceremonies today at Herrick District Library. I had, I had the pleasure of doing one in the fall of 2019, and then there was a hiatus for a while in having those ceremonies here in town. I had the pleasure of welcoming over 100 new citizens from, I didn't get an exact number on the countries, we had 28 different countries for 56 people in the first ceremony, and we had 31 countries for 59 people in the second ceremony, and I know that there was a significant amount of overlap between the countries and the two, but there was also a significant amount of difference. I was trying to keep track of the number of new countries I heard in the second one. An absolute joy to be able to welcome them into the community, into our country, and to see the smiles and the joy on their faces as they chose to be citizens of the United States. It was absolutely wonderful to be able to participate in that, so I appreciate the opportunity to do that. And that is all I have for this evening. Next item on the agenda is Appointments, Motions and Communications from Council Members, and I believe, Nikki, that you have something.
I do have something. It is recommended that City Council accept the appointment of Robert Soders to the Community Pool Authority with the term expiring June 30, 2024, and the resignation of Eva Dean Folkert from the Community Pool Authority effective immediately.
All right, and I would entertain a motion to that effect. We got a, we got a support, we need a motion first. Okay, we'll do Freeman with the motion, we'll do Peters with the support.
Or we could vote first.
All right, any, yeah, we don't, we don't need the specifics, I think we, we've got that, yes, thank you. So we've got a motion from Freeman, we've got an enthusiastic support from Peters, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Any other communications from council members?
Yes, just real quickly.
Yes, Mr. Corbin.
It's pretty, it's very appropriate this evening to, on the approval of the Public Safety Mobile Command Unit on the heels of this week being the National Law Enforcement Week. So to all of our police officers, law enforcement officials out there, who do tremendous amount of work, sometimes not fully appreciated by many, but there are a great, vast majority of us who do appreciate everything you do and who you stand for, so thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Any other communications from council members?
Yes, I just wanted to add my gratitude to the city parks and rec staff over this last week, just working their tails off. I was down at Window on the Waterfront for the entire week, welcoming over 2,000 guests and personal tours, and they would show up with water bottles, they were there just making it all happen, again, all behind the scenes, beautifying our city, and so it's just a hats off and gratitude for them, and then also for our police department of just keeping, particularly on Saturday, when you're engaging the parade and afterwards, all the traffic that was taking place, they're just effortlessly just making, well, there's lots of effort, but it looked easy as they were doing that, and so it's just, again, a lot of thanks and gratitude for those men and women.
Great, thank you. Any other comments, communications from council members? If not, I would entertain a motion to go into a closed session for a periodic personnel evaluation of the City Manager pursuant to a written request for a closed session, and for members of the public, well, if we go into that closed session, we will not be engaging in any business following that closed session. We will come out of the closed session, go back into regular session, but we will, the only thing that we will be doing following that closed session is adjourning. So I would entertain a motion from council to go into closed session.
So moved.
Moved by Hookstra, is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado, any discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Arnsors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. For those of you in the audience, thank you for joining us, but we're going to have to ask you to leave while we go into closed session, and we'll take just a couple of minutes to that.